To call this meeting to order. Please welcome Julie with the flag of allegiance.
Flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The President of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. I am sitting in for our chair, who is in sunny Florida, and she thought it might be easier to have somebody present running the meeting, but she is joining us via Zoom. Welcome, everybody, and I will call the roles. Timothy West.
President.
Joe Kowalski.
Here.
Kathryn Emery.
Present.
Kelly Huber.
Present.
Amalie Grue.
Here.
Caroline Squares.
Here.
Any adjustment to the agenda?
There are no adjustments this evening.
All right. I will consider a motion to approve the minutes of the conference meeting, the meeting of February 2nd, 2022, as written or with corrections.
I'll call my last minute vote.
Moved? Can I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? See, now I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Vote passage unanimous.
Jim, I thought you were going to step up to usually number two. You stepped up to whatever.
I guess.
Okay, superintendent report.
Okay, I sent you my report in advance, but I have a number of things to add to that. And I'm going to, I'm going to, we just quickly go through that, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about our report or anything else that I share. So I did, we did meet Joel Stoneton, Jeff Cobert, Bernice Boyce, and I met last week to review of the maintenance list, and we'll bring that to you guys at some point, but it's foundational to that part of the five-year plan, but also the town, we wanted the town to see it from a, just some, give them some idea of what the challenges are for us, and it'll fit into the conversation before, but with the performance contract. But we're, we, whatever, so we met, there was really good, feel great about the support that we're getting from the community, from the town, I should say, town manager and town business manager, which is what Bernice basically is, so we could talk more about that in a little bit. Also need to let you know that this morning, Erin Weeks and I met with the representative from the Department of Education Food and Nutrition Services to review the audit that we had that was done for our food service program, and we will be getting a written report. Today was just the general overview. All in all, it was very positive. There were no corrective actions for us, and there were six observations that did not require us to do any sort of report or make, write those on level of a citation or meaning of a corrective action. And so all in all, it was a really good audit, and the lady was very positive about where things were at with our, with our system. And I also want to add that I know I sent you all the note, but I want for the record, I want people to know that we did waive the two days in November. The letter was officially submitted by Chairperson Hoover, and that was approved, and I did say the letter was submitted on behalf of Chairperson Hoover. So that was very good news. Very happy to get that, and I think it was, it was the right decision. The only other thing I want to need to add is that we have one retirement on the agenda tonight, and I thought I saw she was, she is on our Zoom meeting tonight, and that's, that says Janine Bryant. She's a kindergarten teacher, and we all adore her, is Jenny. So Jenny, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you're certainly welcome to share, if you want to say anything to the school committee, you're certainly welcome to do so. Not seeing her unmuted, so we'll, we'll move on. Any questions?
No questions.
I just want to say thank you very much for, I believe it's 39 years of service. Thank you very much, Jenny, for everything you've done for our school.
Oh, she is unmuted. Jenny, did you want to add something?
No, I really didn't. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay. I was going to type something, but then I think I unmuted myself. Just thank you very much. It's been a wonderful, wonderful career for me, and I'm grateful for my employment.
Hey Jenny, did we determine that you and I were at UMF at the same time?
Yes, we did.
Small world.
Does that mean I'm close to retiring?
I think it might.
Thank you for all your service.
Thank you very much.
Could I just say I'm going to vote against it because I don't want it to retire?
Nope, that's not allowed, Joe, I'm sorry.
Please, please. I don't want to fight with the kids. It's not a vote, it's just a notification, so thank you, Jenny.
Can I ask a question? This is a separate question besides the fact that I'm kind of sorrowful in the way I know Jenny has made incredible contributions to not only her students, but colleagues, as well as the community, the enthusiasm that she brought to the position, and it's been fantastic that she's been with us. But am I the only one that has the February 2nd agendas and stuff? Because I would have brought my own February 15th if I had known that.
What do you mean?
On February 15th.
Yeah, it says February 16th at the top.
16th, yeah. Okay, no, mine's always February 2nd.
Oh.
That's the way they treat me. But I did read it, so you're really, you're in real trouble because I remember what's in it.
Thanks, thank you. Any questions on my reports? There's a lot of stuff that's in my report that will be later on the agenda.
Okay.
I did want to mention, it's not later on the agenda, but the last thing in my report is the process for developing budget hasn't been exceptionally challenging, but it has been on some levels. I met with the administrative team on Tuesday, yesterday, well, and I think we'll be ready to start discussions at our next meeting. Typically, we would have already looked at it once or twice, but we have a, have a lot of work that needs to happen, to pare down, and I have a pretty good idea how that's going to happen, but when I have it, I will provide more information for all of you, and I'll send it on advance so you can see it.
Joe?
Thank you.
I have a question in regard to, at the end of your report, you talked about not just budgets and everything, but you also talked about the performance contract and the need to have special school committee meetings, and then you also pointed out the fact that reality, there's only five of us.
Can we talk about that? That's on the agenda.
You want it on the agenda?
It is on the agenda.
Okay.
We're going to talk about it later on.
You haven't seen it yet. Yes.
Not recently.
It is on the agenda, it's what I've seen.
Then I'll, then I'll be quiet till then. Most of the world stood up and cheered for this.
Is there anything else under superintendent report? Jim?
No.
Chair report, Kelly?
It's 82 degrees and sunny.
Thank you so much. Freezing here.
I don't really have much to say right now, but I have a few comments when we start talking about the administrators' reports.
Okay, we'll come back to you then.
Thank you.
All right, committee reports, finance.
We completed warrants 17, 18, and 19 tonight.
Woo-hoo!
Thank you. So we're thinking that by the next time we meet, we should be all caught up, so that'll be good. Policy.
We have five policies that were approved at first reading, and they are going to be coming before the school committee in March for their secondary, and these are the five policies that could have been read in February, but will not.
Thank you so much. Negotiations?
Joe?
Well, I think the big thing is that we are making progress. We had a very good session a week ago. We're exchanging ideas, and our superintendent is doing a wonderful job of putting the minutes together and the revisions together and sharing that with everybody. We have made some progress in our discussion about the salaries and wages, and we are hopeful that we'll continue to have a good, positive outlook and see if we get this result.
Excellent.
We also spent a lot of time talking about leave provision, which is a big piece of the collective bargaining.
CBA.
CBA, thank you, Kelly.
Okay, you're still, I know you kind of had a timeline in your mind. Are you, are you feeling like you're still on task with that, or?
I, I think so. But it's hard to say. I mean, you know, we, we, I think we have some work to do. I think like any other negotiation, once we get through the hardest part, which is always wages.
Yeah.
I think the, well, first of all, I agree with Joe, and Kelly didn't say anything, but I think she would agree too, that the climate of the, of the meetings have been very good, very collaborative. They have a really nice group, she has a really nice group, so it's been real positive. I think if we can get through the tough part, which is all the kinds of wages, I think we can, we can fly through the rest.
Excellent.
Doesn't feel like there's anything else that's what I would call real controversial.
Great.
Do you agree?
I totally agree.
Kelly, you agree?
I do, yeah. I think we're in the thick of it right now.
Yep. Great. Curriculum, anything to talk about?
I have an administrative report in there, so I'm happy to answer questions with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to let us know that you reached out to?
Oh, yep, yep. So I did reach out to Kathryn. We have a tentative after-school date for sometime in the near future to discuss some of her experiences, our experiences, and kind of do a crosswalk on where we hope with her to be.
Great. And we are at administrative reports now, so Kelly, did you say you had some questions or comments you wanted to make?
Yeah, so one of the things that really stood out to me, and it kind of has stood out to me for a while, but it's, it's always nice to see, is just how generous our students are and thinking civically. So the fifth graders' animal collection, and then the, the sharing closet at the elementary school that's also collaboratively working with the, the high school students is, is wonderful, and I love to see that. I think we are kind of blessed to have a really thoughtful staff and student body thinking about how they can make the world a better place, and I, I really enjoy that. I did have one question for Joel.
Joel is at the gate today, but you can.
Is GNI roofing going to fix that without charging us for it?
I have to look at that. I don't know, Kelly. Can you tell me more about where it is?
Where the leak in the, the elementary school roof that GNI just fixed?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know that answer. You can certainly find out.
Anybody else for questions or comments on administrative reports? Joe?
I was extremely proud of what was written, okay? It was a really good group of reports that were presented to us. I hope that people in our community beyond just parents will take and get a chance to look at it, and I know we posted on our website, which is extremely important. Material in here is the type of stuff I would like to have seen many years ago, put into a community newsletter like every quarter or something. We never seem to have any money or enough people to do it, but, but the point is, is that I agree with what Kelly said, you know? I just wasn't thinking of the two items of giving back, but that was great, but it's just the whole flavor of the report. I think this was good, and it's a positive reading, and it's certainly something that you would want to read on a cold windy night type of thing, so just to know that things are moving along, and that people are doing their jobs, and students are very involved, and it's, this is very commendable, I thought.
It always is, it feels like every month. I want to, I also was really impressed by the, in particular, the clothing closet and working with the high school students, and it just, I saw the crossover also from one of the NHS projects that started last year, and to see something similar but unique for the grade school, kind of springboard from that, it's really cool to watch. And then I also just wanted to say to Mr. Campbell that I love how you kind of highlight something different about what's going on at the high school, like last time it was art, this time it's the library. That's really cool, too. I appreciate that, especially this past year or so, when we haven't been able to be in there, and just to see those pictures and just know what's going on, I really appreciate that. Anybody else? All right, moving on to old business, revisit the return to school protocol.
I actually have a lot of stuff I'd like to share with you before we open it up to the discussion. I've been trying to send you guys information as it comes to me, as it pertains to you, and I'm sorry, I don't send it, I should probably send it to the students, I don't know why I don't send it to you, yes, it's very relevant. The first thing is, actually, sort of started for me last Friday when we had the snow day, remote day. I seemed to spend a lot of that day watching the news, the national news, and I was pretty aware of this, but it really drove from the point that there are, there's a lot of changes, a lot of momentum towards, towards a better place, I guess, for lack of a better term, around the nation. And while I was, while I'm really happy to hear that, it also makes me really, really nervous, so I know that they're talking about no longer calling it a pandemic, they're calling it an endemic around the, around the country, and they talk about the statistics that have sort of led the country to moving in that direction, but I was really struck by, as watching this, how that's not really true here in Maine, at least not yet. So, and then this, this was a big part of our conversation with the Kenton Valley Superintendents. It's a huge discussion everywhere. I think people are anxious for this to, for us to lighten up on masking policies and stuff. All I can tell you is that the superintendent's groups are, there's nine superintendent regions in the state. Each region has a president. The president meets on a weekly basis with Commissioner Macon, and a lot of times they meet as well with Dr. Shaw, who they've met with him a couple times and very recently. I know there's a lot of discussion about trying to set some metrics or determine those metrics about when we can make some changes and whatever, and you can see, well, you can't see because I haven't given it to you. Kelly can see because I sent it to her in advance. Or maybe, no, yeah, I'm going to be one short, maybe not. This is the latest thing that came out from the Department of Health and Human Services today, and I just want to highlight some of the things that were in it. Oh, by the way, before I do that, I follow my own notes here. The latest numbers of positive cases here in winter came out a little bit later this week, and while the number is down, it's not significantly down, it was 41 a week ago, it's 36 last reported, you know? Maybe we're lucky, that's the beginning of a good trend, but we'll see. So I highlighted some things in here. First of all, I wanted to highlight, it's not in this memo, but I think it was something else I sent you, that the federal regulation regarding masking on buses sunsets on March 18th. It's not going to sunset before that, it's already set to end. So I just want people to know that, if we're thinking about doing anything different, what I would just simply say is I think we should not try to get ahead of the CDC. That's been the common theme from the superintendents, it's been the common theme of regional presidents to Dr. Shaw, but at the same time, we want to know that they are, they are indeed looking at the metrics that can say, we can do things differently. This memo that I gave to you tonight from Commissioner Lambrou from the Department of Health and Human Services, there has been a change, a pretty substantial change from my perspective, but I really encourage you not to think about doing it right now. That's on page two, it says, there've been, it used to be that if you had, if you were a universal masking school, you didn't have to do contact tracing, if you weren't universal masking, you had to do contact tracing. They're now saying, regardless of what your masking policy is, policy is, you do not have to do contact tracing. I should just read it off. Now regardless of masking policy, schools may suspend contact tracing. Those schools have the resources to contact trace, may continue to do so. These revisions follow other recent changes from the Maine CDC in light of transmissibility of the Omicron variant. I think that's the case. I will tell you that I polled our nurses, our nurses and my administrative team last week about, because we were having such a challenging time with pool testing, and I'm wondering if we, if people wanted us to push for eliminating pool testing, and the administrative team and the two nurses were unanimous in their feeling that we should not do away with pool testing right now. GNI in particular sent me a very lengthy email saying that a lot of the hiccups, very big hiccups, that we were experiencing with turnaround, that was my biggest concern, is if we're doing, going through all, jumping through all these hoops to get data to try and mitigate the number of, the spread of the variant, but if we're not getting the results back in the sound of the manner, then it doesn't feel like a waste of time. And they agreed, but basically felt that those changes have been, that the CDC and the people who are helping coordinate this have really stepped up the game, and they really still feel, at least for now, that pool testing is, is meeting our needs. So that's not addressed in this memo, but that was from there. And what I did point out in here, or highlighted for myself to share with you is, in the third paragraph on the second page, there's been, it says, additionally following meetings between the Maine Department of Education and Health and Human Services and the Maine School Superintendent Association. Last week, state officials continued to evaluate potential additional changes to policies to prevent the spread of COVID-19 in schools. Maine intends, the last line in it, Maine intends to use its own school prevention guidelines, oh, I'm sorry, to issue its own school prevention guidance following February vacation, likely in early March. That's what I'm surprised, and also again, same here, and they said in another document I sent to you, that the federal bus regulations sunset on March 18th. I can tell you that generally speaking, I didn't even say generally, overwhelmingly, Kenton Valley superintendents and the superintendent of regions presidents are saying that, what I've already said, don't get ahead of the CDC. I think, kidding for Maine school management, basically cautioned us, talking to various insurance carriers, that if we have guidance from the CDC and we choose not to follow it, and there's something that happens with our kids, it creates a huge level of liability for us as a school system, up to and included potential for us being negligent, which is, you know? So we're all hoping amongst us that the, you know, the CDC will, will alter their guidelines. I don't think we're ready to do that right now, personally, but, but I think we, we all anticipate that that will happen before the end of the school year, which I think is, is really, really good news. I'm personally hoping it's maybe following April vacation, which is two months away. So we've tolerated this, people have done a great job, I think we pay attention to the numbers, and that's what my recommendation is. So I'll open it up to you guys now.
I had a question now.
I thought you raised your hand, so do you mind if I?
No, I didn't raise my hand, but I had a question, but now I can't remember what it was. I got thinking about something else, and I lost it.
I think the only thing that I want to say whilst I was thinking about what she wanted to say is, I am concerned about some parents potentially wanting us to, to be the leaders of the pack when it comes to removing masks in the schools, but I don't know that using our kids as the guinea pig is really the right thing to do, even though I, I mean, speaking for myself, I hate wearing a mask, and I can't imagine that anybody else cherishes it. But I, I just also worry about doing something before we see how it would shake out elsewhere.
Kelly, just to follow up on that point, I did get a recent email from a parent, and they were saying, you know, why, why do we keep making kids wear masks when our numbers continue to rise? And I couldn't help but feel struck by the notion that they are rising, we are masking, we are, we do have a universal masking policy, this is how our numbers are going up. I can't help but feel that, what would they be if we weren't masking?
Exactly. That's my concern.
I remember my question. When you were speaking about how you polled the A-team and nursing about pool testing, did you touch on the masking, and did you survey them about the masking?
No, that was before sort of this took on this momentum, but it really was, it's kind of related, because what their concern was, this may eliminate, alleviate, this is, and GNI was the one who sent me the most information, that they were concerned that if we, and I think some of the administrators, Mark, you might have said this too, that, that's what you want to squad, but that if we, if we didn't, if we eliminated pool testing, would we then have to go back to contact tracing? And they were, a number of them spoke to this very clearly, if the alternative is stay with pool testing and not continue contact trace, or if we get rid of pool testing, we have to act contact tracing, they're like, no, we don't want it. Contact tracing was a, was a, was a real mess, and they did not want to do that. So I didn't really talk about the masking, how people felt about masking, although several, several people did talk about it, I think they feel the same way that I just shared. I don't really feel comfortable speaking for them, but I think there's a, there's a strong sense that, I know, I know because of going into it, they were, they were really pushing us hard to be, to be universally masked.
I did notice there's a lot of states that are backing off their masking, and, and a lot of them weren't going into effect until the end of February or maybe into March, so maybe we'll test the data.
I think you're, I think you're right about that, and that's what I was saying when I was home and listening to the national news, there are a lot of, a lot of places, and this, this parent who wrote to me basically was talking about that in California, they temporarily suspended the mask requirement for the Super Bowl, and I, I don't want to weigh in on that, that's, I don't live in California, I don't get to make those decisions, but, but if you want to, it's, it's, I don't even think it's a fair comparison, where we are, where other parts of the country are, Maine is always sort of towards the end, and there are places, definitely the trend is towards a flattening of the line, even a declining of the line, and I think that's what we've been looking forward to, to make a decision. And I think Maine, there's no doubt, Maine is going to get there, I just don't think we're there yet, and I, I know people are anxious for us to, to get away from, from this, but I, I just, I think we're, I think it's premature for us to think about it.
It looked like possibly the CDC would be changing the metrics too, from the number of cases to the number of hospitalizations, so that, it sounded like that might be coming?
Yeah, I mean, it's been, it's been a really robust and robust conversation, and Dr. Shaw has been very receptive and appreciative of hearing from the superintendents about the effect that it's having. They're, they're very concerned, and part of the reason I've been sending a lot of this information is the, the push from members of the community to get rid of the masking mandate and universal masking has really stepped up. We had, as you all know, because you've got, we've got a Freedom of Access request, and Negan and Colleen have been immense in terms of responding to that, and, and I get it, I think people are anxious, they're all anxious to, for us to get to a better place, and so am I, and I think so are you guys, and I don't think anybody's like, oh, can we keep the masks on forever? I don't think anybody's there, but I think there's sort of a sense of, that we've, as I've said before, we've, you know, we've endured a lot for a period of time, and from my perspective, I feel like we can see the light at the end of the tunnel now, let's not, you know? In case that light that we see is a train, let's be careful.
And perhaps instead of going from, you know, universally masking to nothing, could maybe we could please give some more masking breaks or something to the kids?
Yeah, I think those are the, I think those are the steps that, that we're asking for, you know? We really felt like we tightened the screws, the CDC tightened the screws, you know? I, I'm hard. You know, our interpretation was that we could be a little more liberal with mask, with mask breaks, and they said no. We thought we could be more liberal, as you all know, with our athletes, they said no. To me, that seems like the next step. And that will, you know, and I don't think, as I said before, we had that conversation, ultimately in two weeks, we're done our, you know, for the most part with our indoor athletics, and we still have one act, we still have all the things that people, you know, are doing, so we can think about that. But I think that's the next logical step, that we just start saying during school hours, and I'm projecting right now, nobody's, this is, my voice is not part of the conversation, during school hours, here's what needs to happen, we can add more mask breaks, we don't need to do, after school, you have these clubs and other organizations, they can socially distance and not have to be masked, that those seem like logical next steps to me.
Circling back to something about, just reading about other states, I think it's really important to be aware that all states are different, they have different metrics, there are different things going on, different calculus to move their decisions. I also think it's super important to follow up with, when states get rid of mask mandates, we never had a mask mandate, it doesn't mean they're not, they're getting rid of masks in schools. And a lot of people have jumped on this, like New York, which had a mask mandate, and this being on the news, the headline that New York dropped its mask mandates, and a lot of people who are really pushing to get rid of them, they say that they're not in schools anymore, but that's not actually the case, they actually have all masks in schools, same thing's true in New Jersey. So New Jersey also had a mask mandate, they got rid of the mask mandate, but they're, the mandate, still not a mandate, but schools still are required to wear masks. So I think it's just really important to stay focused on what's going on in this community and the situation that's particularly true.
Yeah, I think those states, they actually went to what we've had all along, which is that it's at a level, at a local level.
Yep. So I think people read that and then you hear.
Yeah, yeah, I agree with you.
And I have to say, and I, you know, I don't want this to sound as smug as it probably is going to, but I do, I understand that people are anxious and I think people are pushing, but I still feel very strongly that the majority of the people in our community and our state favor what we're doing and do not want us to sort of just end everything because everybody else is doing it too. I think they're all, we all want to get, we all have the same goal, but I think the people who are pushing and making the most noise are still the minority of the people. And it's probably a growing population, but I still think for the most part, people are going to err on the side of caution, which is a term that I use in saying, I'm not going to take the risk, I mean, who would risk these two?
So perhaps it would be good to, and maybe you've already done this, I don't know, I haven't checked the website, but maybe just get the word out that this is all being looked at and that, you know.
This letter is on the website already.
Okay.
Let me say that, when Tiff was setting up, I got this later this afternoon, I sent it immediately to Tiff, it is already posted on the website. The other thing that's, that I probably should mention, that I didn't mention earlier, but one of the things that DHHS is suggesting is, or reminding people, that there are free tests available, and they're really encouraging people to reach out and get those free tests, and encouraging people to test their children at the end of vacation before they send them back to school. So that's the other major, that's the first page of that memo.
Do you think it would be worse, you putting anything out, just saying that, you know, we're acknowledging that there's new discussions and this is something that we're looking at, and, I don't know, just, not everybody goes to the website or, that's in the DHHS language, not yours.
Yeah.
I don't know, I just, just to let people know that we are keeping up with everything and looking at everything, so they know that we're, we're not just going straight ahead and not looking around and see what's going on. I don't know.
Would that though, sort of promote the idea that that's an action, that we're further down the road than we might, yeah, sort of thing, sharing what the CDC says and that information, this is timely before, not really before vacation, two days before vacation, I think, I don't know, I would wonder that if that's just something people process, those people are interested, are going to read it anyhow, I think maybe letting that timeline play out.
Maybe, I just know in the past, in this past year, when we've had things that people are, feel pretty passionate about, and one thing I did notice is a lot of people, they're not coming to these meetings, or they're not really up to date on the things that we've been discussing, and it's caused friction, so I was just trying to be proactive about that.
I don't, I actually think it's a very good idea. I put stuff up there, we put the positivity accounts, we update that every week on the website and stuff, but you're right, I mean, in the past, I have written, as part of the FOAA request, I, the articles that I've written for the advertiser in the past, I sent along, and I think it's probably not a bad idea to say, to acknowledge that, I mean, first of all, I think the first thing we can acknowledge is, there isn't a single person that I know that doesn't want us to get to the same place, but it's really a question of, do we, do we do it now when I think it's still too risky? And honestly, go back to our meeting in August, when we first were talking about the, how we're going to operate this entire year, Amelia was in here and she was talking about, I love what you're talking about, we just know we're not ready to do that at this point, and that's quite honestly how I feel, and unless people here feel differently, I'm just not, I'm not ready to take the chance, I don't take the numbers bear from the CDC. And you have to, and people say, well, look at this, I love this one, you need to look at the real numbers, and at some point, it's kind of like saying, don't listen to your teachers, they don't know what they're talking about. You know, the CDC, whether you like what they're saying or not, they are the people I want to trust, they are the people charged with doing this type of work, and I just don't believe, I don't subscribe to any sort of conspiracy that says they are, you know, they're not doing their job, or they're not interested in the greater good, because I, you know, if we don't, if we can't believe that, then I think we're in big trouble in terms of what do we believe? And if I didn't believe the CDC, I have plenty of other people that I'm connected with from the medical profession who say the same thing. So I know there are different opinions, I know there are differing views, I know, and I said this a couple of months ago, that, you know, I talked about climbing that mountain, I thought we were still on the way up. I would say now, if I were staying where we are, I think we're on the other side, I think we're heading down, and hopefully the way down will go a lot faster than the way up, but I still think we're, you know. And as your superintendent, I'm not personally willing to take, not to risk anybody.
Well, we'd have to vote on this anyway, right? And that, I mean, we wouldn't be able to do that, the earliest we'd be able to do that would be March 2nd, because it needs to be on the agenda.
Well, we can realistically say, and this is just my opinion, but we've said, you've said collectively, that we're going to follow the guidelines of the CDC. So we have made several decisions that were against the recommendations of the CDC, but we did it very publicly, we did it very purposefully, we did it after a lot of really good conversation. From my perspective, if the CDC tomorrow said, we're going to end the, we're no longer going to have a universal masking policy, then, then I think we would do that.
Okay.
But I would want to come back here, or maybe, I don't know how I would feel, I would suggest that probably have conversations with you and Kelly about what do we do?
My point was that, I mean, a lot can happen between now and March 2nd.
Sure. I just don't personally see, there's nothing that can happen, the federal CDC, federal transportation group is not going to change, they already have a deadline, it's not that far away for the buses. So I can't see, and all the feedback I'm getting is, they don't see Maine CDC making a decision that isn't supported at the federal level. So I think that's where they're going to get some pressure, there are places that are going against that. And they did say in the article I gave you, that there's now some discussion about, Maine intends to issue its own school prevention guidance following February vacation, likely in early March. That follows, I should have highlighted the whole thing. Maine has largely followed recommendations from the US CDC, including face coverings over the last year. However, assuming no forthcoming changes from the US CDC in continuing favorable COVID trends, Maine intends to issue its own prevention guidance following February vacation.
So by our next meeting, a lot, it could be a lot more than the Maine CDC has done.
I suspect that.
And we wouldn't be able to vote before then anyway.
Right. And we're basically out of school all next, we've got two days, one day left, two days left this week, and then we have, don't do that to me. Yeah, then we have a week of vacation, and then we basically have three days before, so basically five days between now, five school days between now and the time we meet again.
Yeah.
I don't honestly think, I don't anticipate they'll have guidance for us by March 2nd, but who knows?
Okay.
Definitely by March 17th, I think.
Yeah. Joe?
One thing that I think can play a role in this, and I'm not sure if we do much promotion of this still in the school or we run by it, but it's the whole aspect of how many of our pupils and staff, et cetera, as well as the whole country have received the booster shot. And it seems like, you know, if you look at the science, the first two shots that we had, you know, are not as effective as we would hope they would be at this point, so we need a booster shot, but pretty much 50% of the people, I believe, have received the booster shot.
Are you looking for the same thing I'm looking for online?
Fifty-four percent.
Yeah, is it in there, I know, is it in this one, I sent out so much information.
Yeah, it's 54. something percent of the newest group.
Yeah, right here. According to Maine's vaccination dashboard as of February 15th, which is yesterday, 54.5% of children ages 5 to 19 were fully vaccinated for COVID-19. Data from the US CDC show that Maine ties with six best in the nation, and percent of 5 to 17-year-olds fully vaccinated, doesn't say what it is. And as of end of October, 83% of school staff were fully vaccinated, so, and I can tell you that our numbers here, it went far better than that.
I'm just looking at the fact that if we want a community that's ready to take and change the masking policy, we're much better if we're supported by more people receiving the booster shot.
Yeah.
That's the way I think.
Well, for me, the bottom line comes down to, I've said it a number of times, but I would continue to say it, being strongly cautioned not to get ahead of the CDC. I think they're talking about it, I think they're feeling the pressure, and I think they're going to, I think they're going to take some specific action pretty soon. Now, when I say pretty soon, it could, like I said, it could be April vacation, but as I'm sitting here thinking about what we've been through over the two plus, last two plus years, if they, if I have to wait till April vacation, I think I could be okay with that, I can see the light at the tunnel.
Is Joe saying, along with this, is the booster, I don't know what we're supposed to say, but would it be helpful if they had a booster, what do they call, you guys don't? Yeah, clinic would it be therefore, if around this, how does the clinic get this?
We've, well, I think we've done that, it's not out of the realm of possibility.
Anything else?
I just, when we have that discussion, if we're going to have it, it's going to come here, it's going to be a lengthy one, because I mean, we've had these discussions before with the public, and it's, I think it's cautious of what's on our agenda, because it's going to be a major conversation.
Great point.
Not just are we going to be, the big topic is taking the masks off, but we're probably not going to sit here and make the decision, masks come off and everything's done, it's going to be, it's on the step process, so there's going to be a lot of discussion for all of us.
Are you suggesting we do a special meeting like you did before?
Almost, I think, I really do, I think we should, when we want to talk about this, I think we should probably just have a meeting on just the masks. We're going to be here to help the public and doing everything else.
Good suggestion. I wonder if we do another day.
That's good.
And we did last time, I think it was a Tuesday or what? Yeah. Yeah, okay, anything else on that? Okay. New business. Discussions regarding the comprehensive energy efficiency improvements are a key selection process.
So in our ties, as we're part two, we had a number of inquiries, I would say we had seven or eight inquiries, but ultimately, we only had two people send in their RQs. And I can't, did I say this in my, but there, whether I said this or not, I don't say it publicly, there are two companies that I'm familiar with, both reputable companies, and so it seemed to me that we, we, next step for us, I mean, the next step would have been, if we had six or seven companies, we would have formed a committee, I would suggest a subcommittee of this group, to look at those RQs and decide which three we would want to interview. But because there's two, and I can tell you that they're both reputable companies, that we move forward with setting up the interviews for them. So my question is this, is sort of the big thing, this goes back to it, and you can sort of weigh in, Aljo, but we, there's two ways we can do this, because there's only two companies, do we pick a separate meeting, not a Wednesday, and have the whole committee do the interviews? Or do we just find two or three people who want to be, two of you, no more than two of you, that want to do the interviews, and then do that, and a number of other people, certainly Joel, you know, and other people that are, you know, from the administrative team. I, sort of a different thing to think about, there's been some discussion about my involvement with this, I think there's, some of you have seen the letters, I think there's some concern about my ability to be objective, I'm not concerned about it at all, but to the extent that anybody might be concerned about that, I have no problem recusing myself from the process and leaving it in your capable hands to do. So I just throw that out there. I did respond to the person who had written to Kelly initially, and she sent it to me, we've had a couple of email exchanges, and then we have, he called me, and so we talked about that, and I just sort of explained that I've been a superintendent for 18 years, I've dealt with what I would call the four major companies in the state of Maine, I would certainly expect that they would know that I would know people and, and, you know, have some sense of their ability or not ability to do this kind of work, and I've done it before. To me, I think those are all advantages for having to be involved in a process, but if people are concerned about the public perception of that, then I'm happy to step away. So multiple two things for you guys to think about and weigh in on.
Jim, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Okay. So the first question is, if you decided to recuse yourself, how much would you be able to be in an advisory role for us? Kind of none, right?
I would, I would, if I'm not going to be involved in a process, then I would say none.
Okay. Will we be able to see the questions before we have the meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay. Was that it?
Yes, I'm sorry, I probably should have waited for you to stop talking, but we can't share the mic.
Okay. And who creates the questions? Are they like always the same, or is that something that we would create as a committee?
We would create that as a committee, I certainly will reach out to all the places that I know that have done performance contracts, get a copy of the air questions, and then we can, we'll generate our own. As you know, that the only requirement is going to be, we ask the same questions of everybody we interview, can't have, ask company A one set of questions and company B another set of questions, they have to be the same.
Okay. And then I guess my last question is, what happens if, you know, clearly, we're only going to choose one of these companies. What happens if the company that we choose feels that we have preferential decision-making toward the other company, even if they feel like they, who are a better company? Is there any litigation that the non-selected company could go through?
Realistically, no.
Okay.
Our decisions are well documented.
All right. If that's the case, I don't know that you really need to recuse yourself, I think, I mean, I'd be a little bit concerned that we would be, you know, rowing the boat without a captain, if you weren't involved, unless, you know, Joel had been involved in something like this before. in something like this before, um, I don't know that it's a smart idea for us to try to, um, go through the RFQ process without somebody who has done this before.
Um, just clarification, we're no longer in the RFQ process, we, we, that's request for other qualifications.
The select.
Yeah, now, now we're the, yeah, we're, now we're in the interview phase.
Yeah, I just, I would be a little bit concerned that we might not, um, you know, there might be things that we didn't realize that we were missing, um, in what was being said to us by the companies, if, if we, um, didn't have someone who has been through this process before helping.
Agreed.
That's, that's my thought, uh, we can talk about that, you and I later, as well.
I agree with you, Kelly. I would be nervous to not have Jim.
I would be nervous if only the school committee members made this decision, okay, in the sense of the interview process. I would like to have you think about expanding to other community members, of which I think we have an incredible group of people that have been, are our architects, they're involved in building, they're involved in construction, it's nice to involve people in the community in something like this, uh, but I think that the decision that's made afterwards is much better made when you're involved in the community, and you'll get much more support for going forward, are the things we think you have to have done, and so, that's a direction I want to see.
Yeah, that's, that, um, I didn't say that, but that's other, other places where I've been involved with, that is, um, been the process, it's like interviewing for a superintendent, or for, uh, you know, an administrator, sometimes for some of our teachers, that we usually involve members of the board, and we also involve, um, other stakeholders, that's a part of that.
So would we put a thing in the community advertiser that says that we're looking for stakeholders to join us in the interview process?
Uh, my problem, that's, that really stretches it out, I would like to get on, I'd like to get moving on with setting the dates, um, you know, I, uh, I would, I would take any suggestions from any of you, who to reach out to, and, and if you, you know, the process of asking for anybody who wants to show up is, is a, is a two, is a double-edged sword, um, you know, because my guests would be known in this community, and they'd decide to be involved in things that we would get, uh, we'd have to go, if we just asked for anybody, instead of inviting certain people, then, uh, we would, I would feel the need to vet people, that we, uh, you know, to make sure they're, they don't have a conflict of interest, um, and I would feel much more comfortable, it, there are the processes that, you know, school, the, the, I mean, what's it called, losing my brain right now, but, um, where, where the school committee and/or I, Joel, would solicit, uh, members to be a part of it, um, and, you know, do an exact follow-on of guidance that Joel, Joel just said, which is basically looking at people that we know that are in, involved with performance contracts, or related, you know, to building construction, or renovations, or, um, those types of things.
Okay, thank you, that's good to know.
How does everybody feel as far as wanting the entire, um, school committee, or just a couple of people, does anybody have a strong feeling like, I absolutely want to be on this, or I absolutely don't want to be on this, or where, where are we at with that, any, any strong feelings one way or the other?
No strong feelings.
Some strong feeling?
I'm just looking at that, if you're not one of, let's say there are two school committee members that are heading into this, the rest of us can attend, we can always find out what's going on, something like that.
Yeah.
Interviews would, would not be done in public, though.
No, but we could be ex officio.
I, I kind of have relatively strong feelings about this, that, um, we are a really great collaborative team, and I think we do well, you know, one person's strength and, and weakness kind of balances out nicely, and I think that we would do well as all five of us being on the interview panel, um, so that if we, you know, one of us caught something that was said that the other didn't, um, I'm, that's my, my two cents.
Okay.
For me personally, I would, I would agree with that, I, I think the whole committee, uh, or a small committee, it's five of them, um, I would feel badly, but I, I put that on there as a possibility, because it really could be that only two of you really, um, feel strongly about being a part, and depending which two of you it would be, there's a great deal of, um, because that's a great deal more flexibility, if we all do it, it's going to need to be, um, one or two nights, um, because we only have to do two, so that's a good, that's a big plus, uh, one or two nights that we'd have to pick, possibly we'd do it in one night, if we want to be a little bit later, I can't see us starting before six, um, and, um, the interviews would probably block out an hour and a half between interviews, so it'd be six and seven thirty, uh, on whatever night that we pick.
Well, just a housekeeping question, would that have to be considered an executive session, or is it just different because it's an interview?
It's, it's different because it's an interview, it's like negotiations, negotiations are not, you know, they are, they are, although it does, I, I would say we can call it a special board meeting, and we could say interviews, so I certainly can classify it that way.
Okay.
I don't really need, I don't know, it's not something I have a whole lot of, I don't feel any, and I would feel very comfortable having two people attend, we can make those decisions.
Well, and Joel, to me, Joel is a given, he's our facilities director, that we would definitely have him on it, so.
And I agree, okay, I mean, I'm always saying, you know, how many cooks do we give in the kitchen type of thing, but, um, I, I just like the idea that we want to do what we could do, but my biggest concern is that in the scheduling part, we would have to have one meeting be just for an introduction of the project, scope of things, what we're trying to accomplish, so the others that we invite from the community, so they would not be coming into a discussion of this without any, you know, knowledge, and I think part of that's good because it sets what we see as the agenda right now, what might change as we went along, but at least it gives them all the guidance to stay in safe ground.
I, well, that's, I didn't think about that property, you're right, it's no different than when you, when you have, when you interview for teachers or administrators.
Right.
You have a meeting with the team, and you review applications together, uh, we have two RFQs, the RFQs are fairly, um, extensive, they're not just like a, a draft of a proposal, it's, it's a lot of stuff in there, so.
That's what I have to draft the questions.
Yeah, I, I would hope to do that in advance of that, so, I, I'm, I'm not really, I'm not getting a clear sense, if, um, I hear what Catherine's saying, um, and I guess I just need to know that the four, so I know, I hear what Kelly's saying, so I feel a pretty strong commitment from both of them in opposite directions, um, so it just feels like we have one and one, so where do the other three of you land?
Um, I will be happy to be involved, um, but if we decide that there can, that we're only wanting to do two, and somebody else has stronger feelings, I can really do, do it either way, I'm pretty flexible, so, and my, my schedule's fairly flexible, so, um, I can go with the majority of how people feel.
Kelly, if, um, I know that you have some flexibility with your work, I know typically you're not available till four thirty, but, um.
I picked some time off to do this.
Okay, all right, Jim?
Um, I'm either way too, I mean, if the majority of us want to do as a whole group, I'm fine doing it as a whole group, uh, if only two people are, we want to go, but I don't need to be.
Joe?
Uh, well, not to disclose anything, but I will be missing some time in March, uh, I've got to, well, basically, some doctors think I have lung cancer, some just think I'm crazy, so, you know, between the two of them, I'm scheduled to go under surgery on March seventh, down at the, uh, Gray Williams, the San Peter Hospital.
So there's a really good possibility, I, I would like to push to get this interviews done before then, but I don't want to put that kind of pressure on you, so.
My concern is you're talking with at least a full March, not a March, you know, to get them interviewed, so.
Um, yeah, possibly, it'll, it'll be hard to get it done before the seventh thirty, but it's, it's sort of doable. So that now comes down to one of you to.
Either way.
Uh, I can do it, but I'm a little bit, uh, fence the night.
Is your schedule fairly small as far as your availability?
It's hard for you to be here before four thirty or four o'clock, right?
Well, I have three kids, uh, if only night, I could do it, yeah, Monday, other than Friday, there's just no way.
So, are you okay if, if just Sue and Kelly do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're okay with that, Catherine, right, as you already said that, are you okay with that, Joe?
I certainly am, because I'm not afraid to pick up the telephone.
Or just show up.
This is true.
Yeah, um, okay.
Okay, can I bring my other point up, but right now, I don't know this, I think we're not agreeing, listen, I started talking to this committee of what was on at that time, about the size of the school committee at least a decade ago, and part of it was, we all have lives, we have other commitments, we could just see it as discussion, some can make it at four thirty, some can make it later on, some can make it during the day, but I think we have too much work for five people. I also am not convinced in my reading of the town chatter, that we would be prohibited from expanding this, um, committee to seven people, and I think, if you and I want to talk to Jeff, or you want to talk to Jeff, I don't know, but I'll go back and look at the chatter again somewhere, with my long extension of notes I have, some points I made, but the point was just simply, school boards do change, I mean, we are probably reasonable at, at five people in some respects, but we're not reasonable all the time, I think there are a couple around that have two, but they're mostly smaller municipal ones, some of them stretch into the dozens of people, and, uh, one of the good things about that is not only the representation, but it's also finding people to handle this project rather than giving to the same person all the time, and that's happening a little bit here, and so I just want to think that, let's see if we can pursue it, let's see if we can move, not that it will help this project.
No.
But my belief is, is that they could even have a special part of the election in June, we have the primary.
Let me, um, let's, let me talk to Jeff about that, because I, I, I don't know what the parameters are, and that, that is a little bit off-topic, but it is very relevant, because what we're talking about, uh, yeah, my, my concern is this, now I'm gonna get even further off-topic, is, is, uh, we were very, very lucky to have Catherine run, uh, we had, we were, but, um, both Kelly and Tim were writing candidates, so, seven sounds like, I, I would have zero issue, I mean, I'm, I'm in love with five people, I'm not in love with all five, but, but I, I love the size of this district, I mean, this, this school committee, uh, it's very manageable, and I think you guys are, are very, you know, and you said it when you were the chair, Kelly said it a number of times as the chair, and you, you all said it different times, the, the, um, the depth of the conversation, and the ability for the five of you to, to sort of share, um, the bigger you make it, the, the harder it is to, to share like that, and I, I think this committee has always impressed me with the, um, uh, the depth of knowledge, so I'm concerned of, you know, making that a little bit bigger, with the concern is there about, about, are we gonna find two more people who want to run? I don't know that, you know, um, but I think it's worth looking into, so if you don't mind, I'll, I'll, I'll be having to talk to Jeff, I'm meeting with him, I'm meeting with him on a real basis.
I think it's a good time, and, and quite frankly, part of pushing this has nothing to do with the energy efficiency part, the strategic planning.
Yes.
I mean, we had a very comprehensive, almost three years of strategic planning, and it's not even survival, that thing, but I can tell you, it was worthwhile, but you don't think about it, knowing it, it was so comprehensive, so much work, and stuff like that, we had a great facilitator, and we didn't quit, so we lumped a lot of pressure on people to attend and not be missing, and get the society to that, and I just felt that if we just took our regular things and then add, what I think is important to any school district, in, in the state is, you gotta have a strategic plan, and that would help us out long-term and so on.
The other, the other thing that I worry about, and Catherine will say about this with five versus seven, is that in several years this year and the past, you've had people who have been available during the day, which has made a huge difference, um, if you have a school committee of all working people, I think it's gonna be even harder to do it, because a lot of things happen during the day.
Yep.
That's all I wanted to say about that, but, anything else?
Well, I just wanna, I wanna add to that, because that's honestly, and I wasn't, not trying, wasn't trying to, to tell Tim not to do this, to be pure passion, I want you to do it, but for me, um, knowing that Kelly has some flexibility, and knowing what your availability is.
Yeah.
Um, if we can do these interviews during the day, that would be even better as far as I'm concerned, uh, it will make it more challenging, because I, I had intended to find, um, members of the public who have expertise in this area to join us, and I will be looking, you guys can send me names of anybody that you think we should consider.
Okay. All right, I will undertake a motion to approve the contracts of Winthropus Schools' continuing contract teachers for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and there is a list attached.
Don't move.
Don't move.
I gotta, I gotta move, can I have a second?
Sure.
Joe, a second?
Yep.
Thank you, moved in second to discussion.
Do you have that list? I couldn't, I just quickly looked at, oh my god, I know we went around and around and around and around with this list, I just saw, yeah.
Oh, okay. Any thoughts, concerns, questions, discussion?
No.
None for you, Kelly?
I just want to, I want to, just for the record, because, uh, maybe the only one who would know this would be Joe, um, when I first said to put this on the agenda, that the response was, well, we haven't really done that in the past, and if you look at it, if you look at the law specifically, it's not really required, what it says is, um, continuing contract teachers, uh, need to be, need to be renewed by, um, six months before the end of the contract, which is August thirtieth, and, and the, um, if you don't do this, if you don't take this action, then they are automatically renewed, um, and that's fine, a lot of other people choose to do that, for me, I, I don't like that, I, I think it's, it's, um, I, I like putting the list out to the public, so the public can see who our continuing contract teachers are, and, and know who they are, um, so, I only share that with you, because if, if collectively you decide that you don't want to do this, then you can tell me that, and I will, um, give it to you, which is, the only thing we have to have no choice but to take action on are probationary teachers, which will be, you will get it in April.
I like it.
So let me ask you a question.
I do too.
Go ahead, go ahead, Kelly, hold on.
Oh, I was just gonna say, you know, having it open and available, um, is really helpful, because if there's something that, you know, wasn't known before about any of these teachers, it'd be a good chance for that to be brought up and for it to be considered, um, you know, whether it's a legitimate concern, or, uh, the perception of the concern.
Yeah.
Um, so I think, you know, doing this publicly instead of waiting is a really good idea, also, I don't know if I was a teacher, if I'd be happy not knowing until two days before school started, whether my contract was gonna continue or not.
Well, honestly, if you don't, if you don't take action by the end of February, it's automatically renewed.
Okay.
If you miss the six month, if you miss the six, that's why it's called continuing contract, if you miss the six-month deadline, uh, you, you automatically are renewed.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't like that process, I think it's too passive for me.
So, can I ask you a quick question? Uh, how many staff people, how many teachers do we have?
Um, I don't know if it's up my head.
It could have been one hundred and fifty teacher beds, but I'm not.
Uh, no, it's not.
So, we're on this list, Joe.
This is only continuing contract.
No, these are only continuing contracts, my point is, really, that, that means that everybody else is on a probationary contract?
Correct.
But let's just get that sometime and just have it, okay?
You will.
Yeah, we'll get that, we'll get that in another meeting.
Yeah, well, I, I can remember that people will ask that question, saying, what is the difference? Uh, you know, I think it's a good idea to do it, and I think it should be a formal part of the meeting, because it is a regular. And I think it should be a formal part of the meeting, because it is a regulation that these people, we have confidence in, and we're moving forward with them, and we hope they're staying with us now. My question would be, do we have to amend this if somebody is leaving us?
No.
No, okay, that's fine. But in any case, I'm, I'm just glad you brought it up.
That's a great question, by the way. You'll, it'll make more sense to you in two weeks.
Yes. Anyway, so that, that's all.
Any other discussion? I will call for both, and all those in favor? Vote passes unanimously.
Megan, would you write in the chat, just remind people that public comments is coming up. If they want to participate, please let us know.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to change April 15th, 2022, from a comp day to a student day to make up for the snow day on January 7th, 2022.
So moved?
So moved.
We'll lay it again.
Moved in second in discussion.
So I want to explain this, because I actually feel really good about this motion. The, and having two teachers on, on, on this committee will, will be interested to see the reaction. But Jim Hodgkin, this is totally personally, not my professional, although it is my professional opinion, because my, my personal and professional opinion. I do not like parent-teacher conferences. And other places where I've been, people are just in love with it. So when I was meeting with the association to talk about the need to make this day up, or how we're going to do this, or we're just going to add it on to the end of the calendar, which, which would have been fine, they asked about whether we could make the 15th, which is now listed as a comp day, into a teacher day, and then do the comp day at a different time. So I began a conversation about my typical rant about how I, the state bosses will only have the one parent-teacher conference, and I think it's irresponsible for people to wait for a certain day. Well, you don't need to hear the whole rant, but but I was sort of stunned to have them say, well, we would, we'd be happy to only have one parent-teacher day. And I said, well, you're two people. Why don't you poll your, why don't you poll the staff and ask them how they feel? So they did. And I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but they, they said, gave it back to me, and I would say it was 75% or greater of the staff were in favor of one, first of all, changing this, that day from a comp day to a student day and not doing a second parent-teacher conference day. So I think that's important for you, for you guys to know. You'll hear more about this when we move forward with the, it's on the agenda, about the calendar discussion, which we're only going to discuss tonight. We're not going to go it on tonight, because I have a, a meet consult responsibility with the association around this, but you know, I, I think for me, with the waiver that we had those two days in November, we're not making up. And the, if you approve this tonight, then we'll back to the calendar as we, as we propose it. We've had two other snow days since then that we used as remote days. And that is our hope, or at least my hope for us moving forward. So I, I would like you to support this.
I'm in favor of it.
Anybody else?
I'm not in favor, but I have another problem, okay?
Okay.
The problem is that this motion doesn't tell us that it eliminates the second parent-teacher day.
It doesn't have to.
Well, I think it has to.
No, it doesn't. No, if we didn't, so hypothetically, if we don't eliminate the second parent-teacher conference day, that we take the comp day, we make it the last day of school.
I understand that, but my point is that I want people to understand that if this passes, this committee has said, no, we do not have to have a second parent-teacher day. Because I think this community wants a second parent-teacher day. My thing is this, I know some people don't attend, you don't see them, but every time I've ever gone to a parent-teacher day, it's always run late, there's always been more people there than you knew of. And I think the pandemic may have cut it down, but I'm just saying that it's been tradition to have that second parent-teacher day.
It hasn't been tradition. It's still a fairly recent phenomenon. When I was teaching, there was only one parent-teacher conference.
When I was teaching, there was only one, but when I had kids, we were two.
I don't even remember going to a second one.
We have, we have one, so you have.
One, only one?
Goes late.
Two, yeah, two, yeah.
They're both.
You had your fingers like this, like one, two.
Yeah, there, I. But I think your point, I was not, it doesn't reach me that we're saying that there's only one parent-teacher conference in this 5.3, but also, I think, one of the things you said, Jim, was that if you communicate, you have a parent-teacher conference designated time, and then you support parent meeting with teachers throughout the year, that's where it's supposed to start that relationship, but then it doesn't have to be a day where it pretty much runs around. So I really very much enjoy the parent-teacher conferences, but the negative is they're all in one night. So you do that to get the free time, meet people, and then do the day meetings whenever you want. And strongly encourage that, talk about making that part of the culture of the school.
And by the way, I'm going to contradict myself, but in my superintendent's report, it does say the request to change April 15th from a comp day to a student day, that would mean that we would eliminate the second parent-teacher conference. So it is, nobody's hiding anything.
We can make a friendly amendment to this motion to say that it would eliminate the second parent-teacher conference. That way, when the minutes go out, it clearly says that.
So Tim and, and Joe, you made the motion in the second. Do you want to add, this will eliminate the second parent-teacher conference?
Yes.
Yes.
Nice friendly amendment, Kelly.
Thanks.
So in the spirit of what Catherine said, will you, you'll have to make some kind of announcement to the parents? Because now the kids will be going to school on that day?
Yes.
And I love what Catherine said, as far as maybe in that little blur, emphasize that the culture that we're looking for is that ongoing relationship with the teachers and not needing to, please feel free to contact teachers anytime that if you want to talk about your child or whatever, you know what to say, but I think that is a, a really great thing to do.
Yeah, and do you have the Zoom? Is that something you guys have done with parents?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so then, you know, using technology for advantage, and a lot of parents tend to come when you don't have to visit, they have to come in. Still opening the door if people want to come in.
Yeah.
Really promoting that. We, we have a sort of a push, or if anybody has that, just if you want to make it, that's what gets us there.
So I think it was a mixed bag for this, for the fall, right? Some did in-person, some did Zoom.
Yeah. And I, you know, I've just gotten from the high school, my girls are both in high school, and I've gotten an email, like an update email from, for each of them, just just checking in with me, and that was fabulous. I really appreciated that. So that's nice, too, just, just a little, put it all in the email.
I know with well-being in the, in the grade school, it's a little bit different than the high school, but I'm in, you know, relatively often email contact with his teacher, just, you know, we're having, I'm concerned about, you know, this, how can I help at home? And I would hope that other parents would, would feel comfortable to do that with their students' teachers as well.
And I think that's, in part of our conversation with the, with the association, that was really their point. And I, and I agree, in the short time that I've been here, I think our teachers already do an amazing job of reaching out. And my, my, you're going to hear the rant anyway. My, my frustration has been that we artificially pick X number of days a year that people show up, and of course, people who really don't need to be, to show up are the ones who show up. But we have, we do a great job of reaching out to our, our parents. Our parents reach out to us if there are issues, and the communication is so much better than certainly when I was doing it, and, and I just think it's, I use the words I always use, I think it's irresponsible of us as teachers to wait for a particular day to tell the parents what's going on. I think it's irresponsible of the parents to wait until a certain day to inquire about things that they're concerned about. And I think people here in Winthrop, more than any other place I've been, are very comfortable reaching out and asking questions, both ways, teachers and parents.
Actually, a big plus could be, since we have the students all have their laptops and all the rest of that stuff, and we practice remote and all those things. If they would take a few minutes and teach their parents how to use it, so they could do the sort of. And that was the principle that some of us sold, the idea of laptops, saying, it's like the 4H program, we taught the kids how to take time, and they taught the parents who will use it.
I, I would be curious, I don't want to put you two on the spot, but I'd be curious to, to hear what you guys think about that notion of only having one parent-teacher conference.
I, I, I think it's fine. I know that if my mom had concerns, she would talk to me about it, or she would talk to my teachers, or I would talk to my, like, I think there is definitely enough connection with just one parent-teacher conference day. But yeah, that's for me personally.
Yeah, not to speak for them, I mean, we're both not particularly powerful children, so our parents don't really have the experience. So my, my parents, when I have a problem, they talk to me on the school, but I don't, my parents didn't even go to the first teacher conference, because they had nothing to talk about with my teachers. So I think one is fine.
And I mean, at the high school level, I think a lot of the kids are advocating for themselves.
Yeah. Lots of teachers don't even, they encourage your parents not to get involved. Yep.
The only thing that an issue is, and I don't know about special classes.
What?
Have your classes, do you have, have your classes?
Um, we have a couple, but those are, uh, those are usually like, well, like the fine arts, um, classes. Or even if they're not, I still think that, um, the, the students have a really good connection with the teachers, and the parents have a good connection with the teachers, so I still think that would be, if there were an issue, I still think that would be manageable.
In particular with Lynn and Toonop, and they've got, they've got designated time right during the day that they can connect with their teachers, which I think is fabulous.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts or?
Let me just go up to you all.
Are we ready to take a vote? I didn't hear what you said, sorry. It's my one word in the air.
Oh, that's right.
Are we ready to take a vote?
Yes, sure.
All right, all those in favor? Kelly? Yeah, okay, vote passes unanimously. All right, I will entertain a motion to move forward with the staff appreciation project discussed in executive session on February 2nd, 2022.
So moved.
All right, Kelly.
Lady Kelly.
Seconded.
We've been seconded in discussion. I see a thumbs up from Catherine, and anything else from anybody?
I mean, Carol, I'm like, what are you talking about?
Somebody would like to explain what it is?
Go for it, Joe.
No.
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's right, because we want it, yes, that's right. I forgot.
It'll come out. We're not trying to keep anything from anybody, but it'll, I think it'll, it'll come out soon enough.
I think it will be well received.
It's appreciation, it's true appreciation.
I'd be happy to tell you two after what it is.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'd be happy to help in any way if I can.
Good.
Big candy bells.
All right, are we ready to vote? All those in favor? Vote passes unanimously.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
Okay, last on our new business, 2022-23 school calendar discussion.
Um, it's really, I have a draft, but I, we don't need to spend a lot of time. Well, I guess we can, if you want, spend as much time as you want. Um, two things I've been talking to the deputy mayor about, and I, that wasn't my official meet and consult, but just the, we put this together, I'd like to say to you that there's a lot of flexibility with this calendar, there's really not. We have to follow, we are, we are bound to follow the CTC, the C A T C calendar they put theirs out first, we follow ours. Two things I want to point out to you, one is, in April, on the 14th, it's no school. In the original contract, uh, not contract, a calendar from them, that would, would have been a comp day. But as I just said, I'd like to move forward with the goal of one parent-teacher conference in the future. And if we decide whatever, that this is what kind of pushback people want, the second one, then we're going to have to move around to workshop day, because we're limited currently to five workshop days. And we're the only, us and Agastya, the only two school systems in the area that have only five workshop days. So we have, those other five are in there, and so we don't really have a choice on that Friday, except there would be no, there would be no school. And I, I like it personally, because one of the trends that, that has come up in a lot of school systems is that people don't go that Friday before April vacation, because it's a travel day, a lot of people take that day off, which is we're trying to discourage, and if we just don't, if we make it a no-school day, that becomes a non-issue. That's one thing for you to think about. The second thing, as I mentioned, I think in a previous meeting, sort of struggling a little bit with the whole end of the year and, and some flexibility, I went back to adding five days in, beyond the 175 student days. And that's, as I said before, depending on the situation, we may not have, we may not have the ability to have a remote learning day. So if we put those five days in it, but we still intend to, to do remote days on snow days, then we could reduce this, the last day to what's actually shown on here, which is June 9th presently. But it, it shows both. It shows with zero snow days and with five snow days. So I suggested that we should do that, because to me, because it's best for both worlds. It gives, gives me some flexibility in terms of, you know, making that decision. We have, you know, a major power outage, for instance, we probably don't want to do remote learning with no power. So this gives us the flexibility. So not asking you to vote on it tonight, I'm asking you to think about if you, we can have some conversation now, answer questions, or you can shoot questions to me. I meet with the association tomorrow to do my meet and consult with them, and then hopefully at our next meeting, I will have this as an action item for you.
I have a question.
I do have a couple of questions. Um, the early release days, what happens at the school on those early release days? Are they teacher development days, or do, do the teachers also go home early? And if, if that's?
Teachers don't go home early. Megan's out there looking at me like. She's been very patient and waiting for, traditionally what happens on those early release days is they are, they are sometimes building-based, and sometimes district-based, and it's a real focus on professional development. But professional development, that'll be focused on, on Megan doing her job.
Okay, I guess you kind of answered my second question, but I just want a little clarification. We don't need to get approval from the state to do remote snow days, that's just a local decision that we would make?
Well, we, the state, remember earlier, the reason we did a, a snow day earlier is because the state kind of changed their rules around what lunches, there's, they have some requirements. We need to do lunches and getting the field off the top of my head, but it's primarily around feeding them. So I had not completely worked out the details with Erin around lunches. And so once we worked that out, we, you know, we could do that. We, we meet the requirement. So we've now had, what, two remote days? And one snow day, which we've now made up with the decision tonight.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
We only have to get approval from the state if we want to do anything less than 175.
I have a question. You mentioned that there were five workshop days?
Yep.
So is, are you counting the new staff?
No.
Okay, are you counting the no-school day?
No.
Are they going, okay, so where's, I guess, one, two, three, four?
Nope, one, two, three, four. There was five, oh, five, the comp day isn't workshop day. So one, two, three, four.
That's a workshop day. Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Okay, thank you.
And, and as I said, not, not to end the conversation or whatever, but And as I said, not to end conversation or whatever, but if we changed our workshop days, or we changed, we added, we did something different, then we get out of, we end up being out of compliance with the tech center, and we get in trouble for that.
I do have one other comment.
Sure.
The last day of school needs to be moved for Juneteenth.
What do you mean?
So Juneteenth would be the 19th.
The 19th, okay, not the 16th, thank you.
Don't do that to me, that was one of my considerations. It's one of our considerations with negotiations, remember Kelly?
That's right, that's why it was on my, sorry.
Is it on the school?
Is it a state holiday?
It's a federal holiday?
Yes, it is.
Federal holiday?
Federal, right, Kelly?
I think so.
Yeah.
I know that we have it off as a paid holiday for the state.
Does something do with golf tournaments or something?
Absolutely.
Not funny.
Any other discussion about the calendar? All right, we can move on to public comments.
We do have two public comments, we'll start off with Jolene Randall, who's joining us via Zoom.
Hi, Jolene.
Hi, Jolene.
Hey, so I wanted to speak earlier, and I didn't know how to like unmute or chat quick enough, but I wanted to speak to Jenny Bryant, and I see that she's not on with us right now. But I just want to let you know how much gratitude I have for the opportunity to have worked alongside Jenny. We've worked together for the past two years and this current year. And she is one of the most caring, empathetic teachers, and she just teaches to the whole child. She supports her colleagues, she's a team player. I'm just, I just want to express how thankful and grateful I am to have had the opportunity to be a part of her educational journey and to have her be a part of mine. And the staff at Winter High School referred to as WGS champions, and Jenny is like the, I mean, she is a true champion, and I am going to miss her incredibly, I'm gonna miss her support and her words of wisdom and just everything about her. So I just want you to know that I have so appreciated having, you know, having had the opportunity to work alongside Jenny, she's just a wonderful human being.
Thank you, Jolene.
And our second public comment is Melissa Brewer, and she's also joining us on Zoom. I've asked her to unmute, so.
Hi, Melissa.
Hi, just quickly, it's hard to not talk when you guys are talking about the CDC and all of that earlier, but just to echo Jim saying, you know, I, I think Jim's spot on with, you know, kind of waiting and seeing, I think if we jump to anything, I think we will be back to square one personally. When throughout grade school, had 129 cases in, since January 3rd, and that was just me quickly counting, it could be, and my, I was one of them and my two children, so it was, it was a long month of January, I have to say. So I really, really would not love going back to contact tracing, and I know Jeannie, Jeannie would say the same exact thing. So, so anyway, just wanna, I think I don't want to do anything yet, and I'm happy to have more conversations as more information comes out. Pool testing, same thing, Jim asked us, which was great, and we pool tested yesterday, and I have all but one back, which is impressive. We have, I think I have 12 pools this week because I've made them a little bit bigger, and we have one positive pool and one pending, and the rest are negative, which is, that's good, like, really good. Like, in the last few weeks, it's been like six pools positive, five, six, last week was three. So we're seeing better numbers, and I hope it trends that way, would be nice. And then agreed with Tim's comment regarding a special meeting, I think that would be ideal, and including Dr. Jen and any local doctors, like Dr. Baker Payne, Amelia has good insight, too. So I think if, if it was a scheduled meeting regarding, you know, new upcoming guidelines, I think that would be key, that's just my personal opinion as well. And I think I just wanted to mention, I just want to thank the pool tester helpers in general, and I think, I didn't want to say anything later, so I just wanted to, we have many, like, repeated pool testers that have been covering a lot, including, you know, moms that are in the medical field when I was absent as well, so, and Debbie Rodri, our assistant principal, filled in a lot when I was absent as well, so, and Jolene, of course. So I just appreciate all the teamwork, and I do have to say, just like Jolene said, Winter High School champions, team players, like, it really takes a village, and we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for everyone involved in communicating. So just want to say thank you, and if you have questions regarding anything, you can ask me, but I just wanted to make note, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Melissa. Any other public comments?
No, ma'am.
All right, we'll move on to school committee comments. Timothy?
I don't have any tonight.
None tonight? How about Kelly?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Yeah, any other?
Oh, can I, can I do? I've got to do two things, number one.
One on the score?
Oh, score, we won, I know we were like 30 or something at the end, maybe more. And of course, the other night, I talked about the half, and I did not spell it correctly, but I spelled it the way you went down east if you spoke it. Okay, just remember that, that sometimes I get thrown back into the old days, but I've had more fun with that, people saying, what did you say, how did you spell it? That's the way we spelled it in Brooklyn, that's why it was a bother. Question, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anybody you want to cite tonight? Do you have any lists you want to give out that were in your report or anything?
I will have more information on those top 10 in my next report. So I met with all but one today, and will be gathering information, and I'll use that information to put together a report for the school committee as well as the local paper. And, long you brought it up, nobody counted. I didn't either. I accidentally omitted Olivia Vance. So I guess Caroline did count, so I'll give her a minus for math today. So I apologize to Olivia, but I think Olivia Vance was, we didn't beyond that list.
Fantastic, that's okay, we help with those things. The other thing I just wanted to call attention to is Erin's report about the nutrition services and her, you could call it a plea, but it really was a plea. She needs some people to sub, okay? She wants us to pass the word and say there must be some people out there that could work for a few hours while the kids might be in school at the same time, but she needs at least three different subs, and, you know, I think that, I'll mention it in different places, and if everybody does, maybe we'll find some people for her, so. My question was, who did they talk to about being a sub?
They can call, call in, and we'll get them where they need to go.
Great, great. Because I just, anyway, thank you for what you did, and I also appreciate many of the updates that you have on the scoreboard in front of the driveway and everything. Some of them I even drive off the road with. I feel like I'm in the Allstate commercial. Thank you.
Anything else, Joe? Emily?
I don't have a lot for today, but we did, last week at our town meeting, we did our quarterly staff recognition award, and that went to Ms. Marshall, who's our, one of our English teachers in the library, and just for really very openly caring about her students. But I also wanted to say that really every staff member is deserving of that award, and it's always, there's always a lot of discussion around who is specifically gonna get it this quarter, but yeah, that's, that's all I have for today.
Okay, thank you. Carol?
Um, I also have a very short comment. My first one is congratulations to Andrew Foster for winning the principal's award, that's very cool for him. And OneX is getting kind of crazy, but in a good way. There's been talk that Winter is gonna be a host site for the competition. Nothing has been decided yet, but something that the drama teacher, Ms. Discoia, said today that I want to share with you guys is, she said, even though we're a small school, we never hosted before, I think that complaining about it and not being part of the solution is, you can't complain if you're not a part of the solution, is what she said. So that's just a very good bit of wisdom we have from her.
Did he say we never hosted?
OneX? You think we have?
I think we have, okay, but remember, I, remember, I helped to start it when I was here, that's a lot, 50 years ago, but the point was, was that nobody else would do it, so I did it, but I know someone along the line, I seem to remember that we did hosting, but that's great, that's wonderful. I hope we get a good, God, people.
Sometime before sliced bread.
All right, I just want to, I just have a couple of things. If you're gonna put any something in the appetizer or put out anything to the parents about upcoming discussions with masking, can you definitely put in the special meeting piece? I don't even know if we want to at some point make a date and put that in, but I think the more people know about that, the better. And then also, our administrator reports, are they still on the website after our meetings? I know they're part of the agenda. What happens to them after? Because I, some people might hear us talk about it, and then they want to go in and see them, and I'm not sure where to tell them where to go.
The agenda gets replaced for every meeting? And the minutes I'm given has never had the, those reports attached? Like, the approved minutes never have the attached report?
How hard would that be to attach the administrator reports to the minutes? How does that, the week is, how does that work? How do the minutes get to tip?
I send them as a tip.
I just had some folks who have, you may maybe listened or saw our meeting afterwards, and then they wanted to look at those reports because we always rate how wonderful they are.
They have two weeks.
And then they can't read them.
They have two weeks.
Yeah, they do, but I could also give it to my webmaster, at least mine, give it to the webmaster and put it up.
I think if we do it at one school, we need to do it for all the administrators. But I don't know, I understand why you're saying that, but I don't know. If that's what people want us to do, we certainly can do that. It's not that terribly challenging. There's so much information on the website, I just, I'm always reluctant to keep adding more and more and more and more and more, but it's not hard to do it, right, Tim?
Can you just attach it to the minutes or put it in the same?
I can handle it however you would like. However, we could, we could create an archive of agendas as well.
Oh.
As a separate thing. And then have the minutes be what they always have been, that's a possibility as well. I have them all in a cool driver.
Do we keep track, do we keep track of how many people are accessing them? I think about all, we jumped through a lot of hoops or water to be.
There's no way to know what we have in traffic on the website because we use Google Sites. I can tell you how many people are looking at videos, and it's more than you might think.
No, I know that, I know, I get a lot of feedback on that.
So.
I.
Yes?
Would we want to have the administrator reports forever as they stand? I'm just thinking, sometimes they have individual students' names in them, we want that redacted before we put that out on the website where they're onlineers? Or is that okay to go out on the website?
We already, we already don't redact them, you know, these, these go out publicly.
Okay.
The administrators all know they're out publicly, so hopefully they're not, hopefully they're careful about what they put in there.
I don't know, I just wanted to point it out, because I have had people ask me, and I was like, oh, I don't know how long we get them.
But they are on, the agenda is there for two weeks, and Tiffany just said it, until she replaces tonight's agenda, that that's on there with all the attachments. They have a pretty lengthy time. Now?
I think I should be. No, I just, I don't know how much time she goes to talk. I, yeah, it'll be there till the new one comes on, but it would not be difficult nor time-consuming for me to just create a second section that has all the agendas if people want that. So that they go back and look at the agendas, because some people can't attend these meetings for whatever reason.
Right.
We post them online, a lot of people do watch them, and, but they may not see them until after the next agenda's gone off, and so they may not be able to go back and look at those reports.
Right.
We also could just do it so that they get, those reports get put on the individual websites. I mean, there are many ways we can handle this, however you feel is best, I'm just telling you, none of it would be difficult to make happen, so whatever you all decide, I can make happen for you.
I like the archive.
Thank you, Tim.
I think that seems the simplest.
Yes.
That's just my opinion.
Emily, are your radio, is it Y-Bus?
W-Bus, yeah.
Is that, is that put on the website, too?
That goes on the school YouTube, Family Productions.
So it's?
It's also on my, my teacher website page.
Your teacher website, okay. So if I didn't follow your teacher website, if I went somewhere else, I'd still find it, there's another category?
If you search Family Productions on YouTube, you would find all of our videos. If you search Winter High School, because we tag all of our stuff with that, Winter Main, it's all tagged with that, you'll find our content. And then if you subscribe, you get notifications when new content is posted.
That's great. I watched, I watched, I've watched it for a year or so, but I really, they look great.
They're pretty funny, they can be.
Okay, and I think the last thing, I can't remember everybody's name, but I just wanted to give accolades to our skiers, our downhill and our Nordic skiers, I know that they did well, and Will Grant, I believe in particular.
He went today.
Very hard. He did, okay, good for him, and he's a freshman, yes.
Really?
Pretty impressive. So good luck to him, or did he win today, you said?
Today and tomorrow.
Oh, and tomorrow, always good. Will Grant. And just, you know, great job to all of our skiers.
He, I know, but on the announcements, it is.
I know.
Okay.
Yeah, the announcement only had one of the two, but both he, Will Grant and Jackson August.
Oh, Jackson won, too, great.
Yeah, Jackson. Jackson.
Jackson August.
J, J.
Also a freshman.
Yeah.
This is Nordic or Alpine?
Alpine.
The Nordic ski team also participated in the special events yesterday.
Oh, good for them.
Oh, great.
That's excellent, so good job out to all of our skiers out there. There's no executive session, so if there's no objection, I can declare this meeting adjourned at 7:45. Thank you, everyone.